I froze up for an hour. Wow, that guy had hours at thirty-eight streets up here in my mind.
Those new units are great.
Huh?
Those new units are great.
They're great. I still don't know the wall.
Hey, Ricky?
Okay, all right. Yes, I will.
You got that.
Hey. Tell him he's got that.
Oh, yeah, I'll do that. Hey, I'm at it right now. I gotta turn that other stuff in. I ain't sad, but I'll be.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes.
I guess I'll leave the bike out.
A little after six-thirty, we'll go ahead and get started. We'll call a meeting to order. Prayer will be what Wayne Taylor and Pledge of Allegiance for Surgeon.
Our righteous and merciful God, our Father in heaven, we pledge a throne of grace and mercy and an attitude of prayer and thanksgiving. We give you our thanks for all the blessings of life. We're certainly grateful that we have health sufficient to be here this afternoon to serve Overton County Schools in this manner. We pray that all the decisions that we make will be pleasing with you, that they will be in harmony with your divine will, that they will be in the best interest of every student of Overton County. We continue our prayers for the sick and the afflicted. We pray that these people would be blessed in whatever way that you see that they have need. We pray that we would never be desirous of being heard or much speaking. May we be steadfast, unmovable, always abounding in your work. Forgive us of our sins and shortcomings, and alas, in heaven, save us. Is our prayer Christ's name.
Amen.
What is this to the flag of the United States of America? And to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to a further minute for October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
Motion second.
We've got a motion in second. All in favor?
Yes.
Uh, pause it. Oh, sorry. Second by Wayne.
What?
Alice. I'm in.
Thank you, sir.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yeah, I've got change here. So, under New Business Item One, make a motion to add for tenure for D. Smith, Catherine Hewitt, and Courtney Todd, and remove Tanner Lacy.
Who said anything again, Matt?
D. Smith, Catherine Hewitt, Courtney Todd. They're gonna move Tanner Lacy.
And Tanner Lacy had gotten it before. He'd already gotten it, so. Can I get a motion?
Uh, make a motion.
Shirley Myers makes a motion for the additions. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mitch Stonesucker. Any opposed?
And we need that, we have one more here.
Something to add.
Under New Business, number six, to approve General Purpose School Revision Three. And that's for the CTE building the county commission approved last night. We'll just do the amendment to move the money from fund balance.
New Business?
Yes.
Can also get a motion, a second for that.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'm making a motion. Mitch makes a statement. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Is there any more? Okay. We'll go ahead and prove the agenda for tonight. Item number six, I think I vote Ricky Dodson makes the motion.
Second.
Second by three. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll go on. We don't have any executive action items, so we'll move on to consent agenda. And we can, we can wrap those all into one if we get a motion. I have a motion to carry. Motion. Second. I'll second. Second by Ricky Dodson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'll go ahead and read these off, whether or not they're. Letters of retirement from the following Lisa Hewitt and Robin Bowman. Letters of resignation from the following Kim Sales, Abby Jolly, Caitlin Looper, Jacqueline Phillips, and Heather. Consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four access for all learning networks K through eight revision one. Consider the approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four CTE Perkins Revision Number Four. Consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four Tennessee All Corps Revision One. Consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four Resilient School Communities Original Budget. Consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-seven Title One A Revision Number Four. Consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year Consolidated Admin Revision Four. Consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four Title Two A Revision Number Four. Approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four Title Four Revision Four. Consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four ID, ID A Part B Revision Four. Approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four CTE Perkins Revision Reserve Revision Two. And one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four HQ IM Literacy Improvement Networks Revision Number Two. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll go on to New Business. Item number one, it's considered to grant tenure for the following personnel. Annie White is recommended by Michelle Vivens, Special Education Supervisor, April Stover. A. H. Roberts. What? Oh, yeah, I'm talking to you. Nate. Michelle Vivens is not able to be here tonight, so I guess we'll just be meeting down there. April, she'll come up. And April, we certainly appreciate the fine food that you fix for us tonight. Thank you, Freddie. We appreciate you. A. H. Roberts recommended by James Cox, Principal, Lindsey Barnes, and Vanessa Gross.
James, first James.
Come on up. Appreciate you. We were just saying. All right.
Yes.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Livingston Academy is recommended by Richard Milton, B. Hadi Adams, Catherine Hewitt, D. Smith, and Courtney Todd. I think David will be out. I'll remember that. Hadi, beside you. I'll tell you, we'll do one beside you. Did you have some food on side?
Oh, I don't believe I did.
Livingston Middle School is recommended by Doug Smith, Kim Dillon, Megan Lawson, Kelly Smith, and Sarah Silver. I have heard six great, by the way. Madison Elementary is recommended by Ashley Fisher, Cara Brown. And Allen's Elementary recommended by Brian Ledbetter, Rakinge McLaren, and Julie Moll. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
If I could go ahead and get a motion to approve tenure.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion by Mike Hayes, second by Wayne Taylor. All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. We'll go on to item number two of New Business. Consider approval of ABA School Contract Agreement, and that is attached to number three in your packet. Motion by Ashley. Second by. Shirley Myers. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number three, consider approval of TISA Accountability Report attached to four in your packet. Get a motion. Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, consider approval of bus trip eight.
Okay, I handed out the two sheets here tonight, and Jason's done always. I just made comments of it. He showed me on here what each county makes it going to, what the routes pay, and what the trips pay. You can kind of look down through there. And Jason suggested on the, on the trips that seventy-five cents an hour would be a good round number. This would have us between Pickett and Putnam for a trip paid within three hour minimum on all trips with a ten dollar an hour for stop time. So if they go, like they go to the city, they get probably through four hours driving time, two hours down, two hours back. If they sit down for three or four, five hours waiting, they get ten dollars an hour for seven hour wait. Jason, get up there and add to it anything you want to say. Here's our bus coordinator, does a great job, even though he hits it, does an excellent job. And if you look at the, I mean, you look at all the counties there, like we didn't get Fentressis, but all the county trips, no, it's ten dollars an hour is the cheapest to twenty-dollar, twenty-one seventy-seven was a half.
Yeah, if we make, we can't touch Putnam County because they're so much bigger county. They got so much more income on us. And I can't remember what the lowest paying one was. What county was it? It's ten dollars an hour.
It was Fentress.
Fentress. So you're making in between the lowest and the highest counties. And it's gonna help our drivers a lot because right now we only have three or four that actually takes trips. And they're, right now, they're averaging on a long trip, a dollar below minimum wage on a very long trip. So this will help them out a lot, and we'll be able to get a lot more people drive trips.
On a trip such as Nashville, Los Feliz, Chattanooga, it's seventeen fifty and ten dollars an hour sitting time. If we could be possible, if we can make less than a hundred dollars, we can at least have a minimum of a hundred bucks for trips such as.
I agree wholeheartedly. Right, right. I agree wholeheartedly.
You would only have to say four hours driving, couple hours sitting, if you had to get back and make your route that accident. That would only figure out about ninety dollars.
Right.
There should be a minimum.
A minimum on a trip like that where they're getting back to, to make their route.
Right.
Yeah, and now if they're not gonna be back to be able to run their route, we stay with a straight pay. But if it's coming back, well, they can run their route, yes, a minimum of a hundred dollars. Yes.
I, I used to make several trips and have to get back.
Right.
That accident, making their route.
Right.
So there's others I'm sure still.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, right, correct.
But now, a bus driver today makes eighteen fifty an hour on the route. And so, I mean, seventeen fifty an hour is a dollar less, but Jason's satisfied, he thinks bus might be satisfied with that. And that's what I recommend tonight, that a trip paid would be to seventeen fifty an hour with three hour minimum, ten dollars an hour stop time.
Knoxville, Nashville, Chattanooga. And we make those, that's Chattanooga, so we make those trips. We used to, I guess.
So do we need to put a stipulation in there that any trip exceeding seventy-five miles or a hundred miles, then it could qualify for the minimum hundred dollar standard?
We can do it that way over either of those three cities regardless of where students are coming from. They should make at least a hundred dollars whether they're coming from Richmond or coming from.
They might, they might make a field trip to somewhere where it's not a city.
Well, that's possible.
I think we need to put a mileage stipulation if you.
That's, that's fine. Hundred miles.
I'd be good with that. I'm sure the drivers, I'm sure the drivers would agree with that, too.
Yeah. So a hundred miles for a long trip.
I'd say seventy-five.
I'd say seventy-five.
Seventy-five miles.
Yeah.
That, yeah, that's why I'm.
Yeah, one way, one, one way.
One way.
So the motion is seventeen fifty per hour with three hour minimum at ten dollars an hour on stop time, with a minimum of a hundred dollars per trip on a long trip, which the mileage is seventy-five from hospital to waiting. Everybody clear?
It's not due in late.
Right, it's due. Can I make that motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Ricky. Second by Lee. Do we need a roll call?
William Abston?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Charlie Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stonesucker?
Yes.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Ten-four-zero, opposed, motion carries.
Uh, we'll move on to number five, and that's consider approval of substitute teacher pay.
I think the last time we discussed, and I'll make the motion to set it at fifty percent for non-certified and sixty percent for certified at the day, the starting teacher daily rate. Fifty percent for non-certified, sixty percent for certified of the starting teacher daily rate.
Second. Motion has been. Second to that.
Are you gonna include the subs and the, I mean, the EA's, like the Aids?
Well, that's a total different pay scale. This is. I mean, mine's just for substitute teacher. I don't think we've kind of digested and all.
No, no. We did talk about the last one, making it at least the base of what a base person. A starting.
At the starting rate of a, so the EA in a.
So if you all will rescind your motion on those, then we can add that in there.
Yeah, I would send mine.
That's well. So we'll do the fifty percent for a non-certified and sixty percent for a certified on the teacher pay scale. And then for support staff, they will start at the base pay rate of whatever that position is. And I'll make that motion.
So it starts at this.
So I could.
Base rate of.
The substitute will be the, start at the base rate of that, of the position that's, they're feeling like an EA. Will start at the base rate of an EA, and that way if we raise the pay scale, it will automatically adjust. They will be at that base rate if we raise that pay scale. Does that make sense?
Just making sure I can get that right. Fifty percent for non-certified, sixty percent for certified, starting at the teacher daily rate for subs. And support staff at the base rate of the position field. Is that right? Motion was made by William.
I'll second.
I'm second to that. What is the starting? Day rate? Oh, non-certified and certified.
Eleven or twelve. Or we have twelve.
For a teacher, it's two-hundred-and-ten a day. So a non-certified, they get one-oh-five, and a certified, I think it's one-twenty.
Six.
One-twenty-six.
Any other discussion?
I'm not even gonna start this. I mean, who ever gets started? Who else can you hear? Who's gonna start this?
Definitely at the beginning of the month, please. That would help. Make it effective at the beginning of the month.
Let's just go January first.
We could go January first.
Yeah.
Will that also be true with the bus driver?
I'm pretty much in violation. It's already. It's already voted.
Right.
About part of that.
The bus driver trip will probably be okay, because it'll be.
It'll start tomorrow, trips.
I said, oh, we can start this December one or.
Well, that part of that is, we've already voted in that one, so.
I'm going with this one. Instead of January, we want December one. On the page. On the page.
That's fine. Crystal, will that work with you, December one?
As long as it's the first of the month.
December first.
Where is that? Too soon.
I'm good, anybody?
Yeah. It's December one.
Okay, December first. All right. Any other discussion? We'll do a roll call.
Okay. Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Mitch Stonesucker?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Charlie Myers?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
No.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
William Abston?
Yes.
Nine-four, one opposed. Uh, nine-four, want to pose, motion carries.
That is all of our new business, uh, we'll go on to the special revision.
We, we got the number six.
Oh, number six. Number six, uh, general purpose schools revision number three.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Mike Hayes, second. Second by Jarman Hicks. Any discussion? Is everyone calling now, so? All in favor?
Uh.
Any votes? Motion carries. Now we're done with that. Uh, we'll move on to special revision, OCA Jennifer Allen.
Hi there. I just would like to congratulate all the teachers that got tenure, teachers that got tenure again. And, uh, also to congratulate y'all for having such a large group of teachers that qualified to get tenure in our county. That's a wonderful thing for the school system. Uh, in this season of gratitude, I would like to say that the teachers of our county are very, very thankful for board members and administrators at the county level and at school level. Who are supportive and the ones that are very appreciative and supportive of the teachers and the hard job that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that's all we have, can I get a motion to Jarman?
Yes, Jarman Hicks.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson, all in favor?
Uh.
We'll move on to the work session.
Congratulations.
First I know. Our.
Nine-hundred degrees.
Everybody ready to start this, sir?
Yes, sir.
Alright, we'll move on, uh, the only items I have is, uh, discuss bus driver insurance, and Jason Cantwell is gonna talk about that.
Jason gave us a, he gave me a list, him and Jennifer, our bus drivers, they give us a list all day, he's got all the drivers on there, how many we got? And we got, it's four, and we paid for the side, Jason.
Four.
Four is forced meeting the insurance. And they have to work, they, right now, they work twenty-hour weeks, they need thirty hours to be full, considered full-time for the insurance. And Putnam County, they pay their bus drivers five hours a day, so they pick up their, an hour's worth of work. Doing some maintenance in the school building, or working at the bus garage, or something like that. And we just, we just talked, I'm here and talking to Jason yesterday, and if we could come up with them four drivers, two hours worth of work to do. And Steve mostly got a lot of maintenance going on, Jason probably uses them at the bus garage, if we could come up with them two extra hours a day, they would qualify for health insurance. And that's huge, having that health insurance, because if a bus driver's working full over two weeks, he has to pay his health insurance.
Yes.
And that's, that's pretty tough, that's ridiculous, if you got drivers doing those systems, looking, because they have emergency insurance at some places, some of them don't, some of them don't. Like I said, Putnam County made it pretty interesting for them.
Yes, they make it easy for them, they make it extremely easy for them. They need insurance, they got a driver coming, these insurance, they find them, which they pay them five hours a day, where we only pay four. But they find them an extra hour worth of work, just so they can get their insurance. And I talked to a gentleman at Putnam County today. Wait.
Sorry, to be sure.
Sorry. I talked to a gentleman in Putnam County today, and he was telling me, one way that they do it to get an extra hour is they add to their route. And I'm sure we could, we can come up with something to help these guys get an extra two hours for insurance.
A lot of these other drivers here have either done work in the school system, or they hauled the high school from, uh, Hillham or Richmond or anywhere until you get the extra two hours a day, so they're doing that. And so that, and some of them works in the school system all day, so, and others was, that, those either had, you know, the insurance and.
Yes.
And they did, that's one that Jason, he checked with them all.
Yeah.
And that's what he come up with. I'd like to see us try to come up with something then, because ins- insurance is, is huge, is huge for a family. And it's, it's pretty tough to work for two solid weeks and all your money go for insurance.
So these four that are listed, there's two that says interested and two says no insurance, does that no mean they don't have it?
That, that means they don't have it, period.
Okay.
Uh, two of them do, but they're interested if we can get them something that they can afford, you know, like, basically what everybody else is getting, that's already got it.
I'd just like to see us, uh, put that on the next, uh, student's agenda, and then give you time to think about it. So we have, come on, go ahead.
I, I looked into that a little bit, uh, this week. Um, and, uh, I spoke quite a bit today with, uh, our insurance person Rebecca Flower, and, and she said it's twenty-five hours instead of thirty. Uh, or the, the plan that she gave me to take work here, it's, uh, the agreement we have, you know.
That's great.
I mean, I asked her about it, she, she typed it all up for me, and she gave me copies of the plan, highlighted it. Uh, and it's, it's twenty-five hours, she said. And, uh, but there was, and, and I'm for, I'm for, I don't want to hinder anyone from getting insurance, but she also cautioned me of that if we, um, if we have anyone that we offered that to, that, uh, that might be on the, on the different insurance plan, like PNCare, if it's offered through their work, then they wouldn't be, they wouldn't qualify for.
I have discussed that with the drivers that have it.
Okay.
And the ones that are interested, I talked to them about it, and they said it would not affect them whatsoever. So they, they, if, if we were able to offer them insurance, they are extremely interested.
So everybody else that's on this list has insurance through?
Either through Medicare, Medicaid, where they retired or retired age, or they carried it over from another job. They, they have another type, or through the school system.
So that, if we offered that, that wouldn't affect them?
No.
So we just have to come up with four, uh, four hours.
One hour, and that would be easy, I, I can find everyone, those four people, an hour, that'd be easy.
And I had her, I had her to look, uh, as far as other people in our district, that, uh, like cooks and so forth, that would not fall into that bracket. And, uh, I think we have three other people in the district, that, uh, like we have one custodian that works five and a half hours a day, and we have, uh, and we have two, and we have two cooks also, they just work five hours a day. So that would be two, that'd be three more people that we can offer that to. And I don't know, she, at the end of the day, she was looking to see if they had renewed insurance or whatever. So that would be another handful to add to that list.
That'd be great.
But we.
If they work five hours a day, they get twenty-five dollars.
They'd be twenty-five.
I know, that's why we're saying, that's why we're looking to see if, if they.
Four hours a day for driving.
That's correct.
What the other hour, would that be easy to, maybe let it just the maintenance?
Yeah, or with the bus garage.
I mean, it would be small.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess, to, to, to be efficient, and y'all can manage it however you want to, but, I mean, you can work with Steve, and it's like, hey, Wednesday, I'm doing a big project, we're sending so-and-so over, you're gonna work from nine to two, five hours, it may be one day, you did all five hours.
And the people I talked to about it are willing to do this, they're willing to, which you, it said it's five hours, they're willing to put in the extra two a day.
Yeah.
But that extra hour, just one hour, make it a whole lot easier.
You know, like bus inspection, where you could use them, we.
I could use, we're saying to one of them during inspection.
I fully afford, as long as it's managed and they're working, so.
Right. We just need to put on, I'd like to see it put on the next one, maybe.
Would we do this each year, would we ask, would y'all be ready to ask each year if they wanted to do this?
I don't think so, I think we'd have to offer it to anybody that's in a part-time position. I mean, I could decline, but if you offer it for one or two, you'd have to offer it for everyone.
And that, that's kind of my thought, too, of, you know, what if next year it changes and there's twenty people in that list? I mean, I know that's kind of astronomical, but is that gonna be feasible at that point for the system?
That's the question we need to find out, is can we as a system carry every single person that works here on insurance?
We're carrying most of them, I mean, anybody that wanted, if it's a teacher or a professional is on it.
Well, no, I know the third one there, where we're carrying those, but then that means anybody that didn't qualify for that, we're gonna have to be, be willing to pick those up. Can we afford their affairs at the school system, that's my question.
That would make big difference in that part-time group.
Yes, because we'd have to pick up every single person.
So what, what other groups are in part-time now that doesn't qualify for insurance?
Food shirt.
The cooks, custodians are the ones I think.
Cooks, more cooks.
Jarman loves it when I ask this, but can we have a financial impact on what we have today? Uh, how will that, how much would that impact us on a monthly basis if, if all the part-time people started getting insurance, we're starting covering that? Financial.
Now, I mean, we got to beat these teachers for money, but we're short drivers now. And if somebody wants to leave and go somewhere, we're doubling four routes, now, Jason, doubling four routes, how many special ed routes?
Two, as of right now.
Number two.
Where we got, that's not running, so we have them on different buses, trying, that's helping us get these kids related to me.
That affects our chronic absentee, it takes our money to get them to run school.
And I'm, I'm not opposed, I'm just saying that, if, if, I mean, the children can only stay on the bus so long, and you double, some, there's some routes you couldn't.
Yeah, there's some, there's no way we can't.
Ninety minutes. Right, ninety minutes.
Yeah, I am.
One.
It's how much one way, I thought it was forty-five minutes.
Ninety minutes, they're right.
No.
Did you call them, say? I, I'd say that, you know, if, how would it impact, is if everybody, uh. Because we offer, we offer a time. And then can we find work for those people, because then we're not only gonna have to pay for the insurance, but they won't have to pay for the extra hours that we're working to, during the rounds.
So, uh, if we, if we get that financial impact, and see what that kind of looks, and if we can revisit this, whenever we have a little bit more information, if we're good with that.
Does anybody have anything in?
I just want to thank whoever turned the heat down.
I'd like to go if it turns hard to get your name.
Oh, no, I don't.
Two things, uh, one, Alex Jim, uh, so since we're paying with it with ESSR money, uh, once we get confirmation from Teresa, that the amendments that she's put in, it's good to go, then we'll start working on it. Um, then the bond update, I talked to Connie today, so the process is, we've already approved the bond, the fourteen million building program. Um, the bond company has to draft a resolution, send it to the county commission, once it goes to the county commission and they approve it, then, once they approve it, then it'll go out for bond bid, to get the lowest interest rate. Then once that's done, then we can kind of start the process from there, so she knows, she's well aware, and she's working on it, so.
I just want to thank all the teachers that have tenure since, uh, for, and all of our teachers in general, for all the hard work they've been doing.
I, I would like to mention one thing, I sent you all a text, I believe it's a text, or an email, one about a, sure, about the property that, uh, that we found out that we owned at Rock Spring. The, the attorney, uh, called me and said that, uh, said that the, uh, their incorporation status, uh, had lapsed on that property, and, and until they got their corporate papers back in order, we really couldn't do anything. If we were interested, if we were, if you all were interested in, in signing that back over to, signing that over to them, or selling it to them, or whatever, we can't do anything until they get their paperwork straightened out. Um, and then one, another thing for us to, to remember would be that if, if that was the route that we just, that you decided to go, we might want to be sure that we keep, uh, a reverter clause in there. For if that property were to ever be no longer used by the church, that it would revert back to the property of the school system. Was that like one-point-two acre, just one, yeah, one-point-two acres? I just wanted to share that little bit of information in it, as I learn more about it, I'll keep you informed.
Well, and I think at one point, um, I believe we were under the impression they got taken care of, and we were taking care of all the little pieces of property that were out in the county, that we were turning back over to the county, and they were turning some property over to us. Think that we might have been under the impression that this stuff was taken care of during land, and I guess it wasn't.
I didn't know we owned it.
I thought we got rid of all that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know, I didn't know we owned the property before.
I sure did.
I did, I did.
That's what I'm, I'm just.
I guess we could get it straightened out, we didn't know we owned it.
So, uh, just a reminder, uh, scholarship fund, you can do, uh, for TSBAN conventional leadership conference. I should have had our vision. Thank you. You're here every night, we appreciate it. Glad that you showed the interest in the schools, we greatly appreciate you, so. Thanks to all the senior teachers, I know they've all been in the present now, fabulous job.